Evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the regular city council meeting for February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I will ask that everyone would stand, will say pledge of allegiance, and then we will have an invitation by all the ladies McDonald.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, we thank you for blessing us in another day. We ask you, Lord, to come into our council chambers, bless this council, that everything that we do in the city of Markham is done decent and in order, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alton Powell.
Here.
Alderman Dowell.
Present.
Alderman Jones.
Present.
Alderman Hampton Hauser.
Present.
Alderman Baron.
Present.
We have a call.
Approval of minutes for regular city council meeting, February second, two thousand and twenty-two.
We haven't had no reason. The regular city council meeting for February second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Motion by Alderman Dowell, second by Alderman Baron, for approval of minutes for regular city council meeting, February second, two thousand and twenty-two. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Authorization claim to the council bill list.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the authorization claim list for February sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, which brings profits, corporate, two hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and thirty-five cents, water and sewer, five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, solid waste, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and ninety-eight cents, motor fuel, thirty-nine thousand, six, excuse me, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-three cents, the Markham City Living Complex, eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, Rotherham, six thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-three cents, which gives us a total of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, with manual checks adding to three thousand, two hundred and four dollars even, which gives us a grand total of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second. Motion by Alderman Hampton, second by Alderman Baron, for approval of authorization claim their file to bill with us. Questions?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, in reference to the rolling rate, can we get an opportunity to speak on that and see exactly where that amount came in at? We can do that off tomorrow or whenever. Yes. Yes, you just stated that as well. Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, under special presentation, there are those, but I'm going to ask the councils to give you a little room to try to address the public so we can carry business on tonight. And I think there will be a leeway because we have more than our usual crowd here tonight, so I'd like to ask you all to give you a little leverage, your little room, to speak for a moment. You okay with that?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I want to try to address, we know that there's an item on our agenda tonight that has brought many of you out. I wanted to try to get ahead of what is going on with the item that's on there, and obviously we'll give everyone an opportunity to express themselves, but let me just say that I got noticed here today, as of today, actually, finally, that there will be no action taken on the existing orders. So we'll see if that actually takes its course. Over the course of the evening, we have to get to that, and then the aldermen will have to take their position about the orders. But let me say this about the action. You've obviously been heard. My office has been called, all the councils have been called, that's democracy at its best, that's how it should be. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that everybody's got a voice and everybody's got reason or rationale for what they see or what they want. And we all up here represent this community, and when the majority of the council says something, then that's just the way it goes. It doesn't matter what the mayor thinks or what he wants, if he has a point of view. But one thing for sure, most of the time, that I can pretty much say, the council pretty much does pretty much go in line with what the mayor is taking in thought. That's why I got elected, was to have a vision for the city and the direction it should go. That doesn't mean, you know, that we had, you know, there were extreme set about how far we go with liquor licenses in the city, that two o'clock is too long, maybe four o'clock would be better, or twelve would be better. So it's all over the map of what it would be. It doesn't mean that we've closed down alcohol in the city of Markham on any dimension. That was never it. But just as well as this room is full of people here this evening, there are another thirteen thousand people that may see it differently. And they represent the wards, just like I represent the community, reality, and whatever that majority comes up to, that's, at the end of the day, whatever this community says it wants, it doesn't matter. That's what will be voted upon, and that's what they'll respond to. So at this point, the intention is for this council to go to work over this issue and try to see where they want to land with it. This isn't the first time we've had that. And I certainly wish that we could get this many people here with something else other than the bars. That's for sure. I haven't got no problem with bars, because I don't have a formal one in my house, but I'm not against it. But it'd be nice if we could equally have that as well. And certainly, I think that in some places, it's good if we have this kind of matter way ahead of time about what we're doing. You know, the same so-called, what I would call this, this is a chamber of commerce. Well, then use it. Use it to talk to one another about the behavior of one another so we can conduct business properly and appropriately. So we all have our opinions, and we should respect that. So if I, as the mayor, say that we should be up until four, then I may have some other people that may not like that. But by the same token, it needs to be respected, because there are other people that think different, and they have that right. They live here, some of you do live here, some of you don't. Some of you have an interest for business and commercial, and that's fine, and we respect them. So let, we shouldn't sound an alarm. I think we just need to certainly take it in stride and have some understanding and respect for one another. I was disrespectful to no one in this process. This is not the first time that I had this issue come before me, and that's just, that's just how it is. But listen, that's why this is democracy. We got people here that say, well, Mayor, that's wonderful that you have that grandiose idea about your utopia of how you think it should be, but they'll vote it up or they'll vote it down. Let them do their job, and let me do mine, and that's all we ask. And so if you speak tonight, I ask and I will demand that you respect me. This council will not be disrespected nor the city. If you do, I will put you out. I'm, I didn't make it work. I will ask you to leave, and I'll say more than anything, I'll put you out, because that's just what you're right. So some of the things that have happened, I'm correcting them. I've taken on an administration that was way, way out of balance and way out of line. And so I've been tasked with trying to do that with this council, to straighten this community out, and we have done that. So, you know, it was important that I opened it up with, should you choose to speak tonight, I think that you probably want to limit some of it, because you don't want to do, if you got this far, you're going to not do it some. You might want to be careful with that, on how you handle these all of them, because they have, they've got some pressure on them about how they have to not just deal with you, with their constituents. So be careful with that and be respectful of that. I am. I respect all of my colleagues here. And so, and I respect you enough to tell you tonight, as the leader of the city, what's going on. So that's part of what I just wanted to mention, what I would suggest. We typically are under public session. We will have you sign if you want to speak when we get to public session tonight. We'll let you do that. We have some business we need to take care of along the way. We, I know that we'll be in an executive session, but we're going to do, we'll have you to speak before, if you have something to say. And we'll try and keep you abreast of whatever the process is that we determine or decide about over the, I would say, the next thirty days, or however long the council decides they want. But let me make this clear. One point that I should make clear, and I'm looking at a note, is that the mayor doesn't have the right for any bar, your bar or some other bar, to go yank your license off the wall and close you. Just don't work that way. It's a process. So if you happen to be the, coming to the meeting, or I'm sorry, if somebody's coming to a meeting like this and it's for you, same process will apply. The same due process will be given. It still work that way. So, yeah, we have issues, they should be addressed, and the resources I can tell you that we've had to try to deal with these things, it's been a task in trying to put things in order. So we're charged, we're trying to correct some of the things that God has here, and we're working on it. We're dealing with that. And but by the same token, we have to, we have other measures that we can take as a council. Council said, well, I don't think we want to go that way. Let's think about it. Maybe we don't want to do that. It might affect a lot of people. Let's look at it different. So that's what's going on. But by the same token, that's an option that's available to the city, should we choose. That's not where we're at. But meantime, I can assure you that the thing that God is here is being dealt with, and if it comes to you one day, it'll be you being dealt with the same. Find yourself. None of this is really complicated at all. So I would recommend tonight that we get, get you to sign up if you want to speak tonight. You'll be allowed to do that. You only give a lot of time. When that time comes, we should be getting to that pretty quick, I would imagine. And like I said, I'm just going to demand that you're respectful, and that's all I ask. Okay?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Will we have a vote on it tonight? Will we vote on it tonight?
I'm understanding that that isn't what the pleasure is at the council tonight.
No, we're not voting on it tonight.
No.
Okay.
That's fine, understanding, but you all can decide that when attorney reads it off, but don't.
That's correct, though, Mayor.
Okay. So to my left here is the city council. I would recommend that you line up over there if you want to sign, sign your name, and if you're going to speak tonight, do that, and we're going to carry on with business. And when we get to that portion, we'll do all of them. Okay, thank you, council. I appreciate the honor to the other for the word of God and whatever. Okay, city attorneys report now again, please, don't hesitate. If you're going to, we want you to come over and sign.
Okay.
Just come over and sign.
I'm sorry.
Get up and cover your side, that's fine. Okay. City attorneys report, we're going to move on.
Ladies and members of the council, and members of the public, expect the city attorneys report appears gentleman number eight, eight, through the H. Starting off with eight, eight, there's a proposed resolution approving the extension and renewal of the reproclamation and declaration of the continued local state of emergency within the city of Markham, and approving the mayor's determination regarding modifications to in-person meetings in response to the COVID-nineteenth epidemic, date February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mayor Alton Powell.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two dash hour six seventy-two, a resolution of the extension and renewal, reproclamation and declaration of continued local state of emergency within the city of Markham, including the mayor's determination regarding modification in person meetings in response to COVID-19 pandemic, date of today's date.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Baron, second by Alderman Hampton, for resolution approving the extension and renewal of the reproclamation and approving the mayor's determination regarding modification for in-person meetings in response to COVID-nineteenth epidemic, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call.
Alderman Dowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes, with a question.
Yes.
Are we still doing these live, or you have Facebook Live, or we are, or have we started back live?
No.
Okay.
No, this, this is all we're doing.
Okay.
You know, we're putting it out. If we don't have this assembly, then we'll go back to live.
Okay.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Hampton Hauser.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have under eight B of proposed ordinance, amended section one twelve point zero one nine, title license classification, sale hours and fees, section one twelve point zero two three, number of license, and section one twelve point zero four five, unlawful hours of operation, sale hours, chapter one twelve, alcohol, alcohol liquor, title eleven, business regulations of the code of Markham to decrease the number of liquor sale and operation hours for class A liquor license in the city of Markham, Good County, Illinois.
Mayor Alton Powell.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this proposed change. It's got an ordinance on it, but I don't think that it would, I don't think that's proper at this time, because we're not going to act on it, or I don't believe we're going to act on it. So I'd like to make a motion that we table the proposal for the ordinance amended section one twelve dash zero one nine, license classification, sale hours and fees, section one twelve dash zero two three, number of license, and section one twelve dash zero forty-five, unlawful hours of operation sales, chapter one, one twelve, alcohol liquor, title eleven, business regulations of the code of Markham to decrease the number of liquor sales and operation hours for class A liquor license in the city of Markham, county of Good.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Baron, second by Alderman Hampton, to table ordinance amended section one twelve, zero one, zero one nine, that's read. Any questions?
Yes, for how long? How long does it be tabled? I mean, will it come out next week, next month?
My, my reason for requesting that this be tabled is I need more time to do some research. I've talked to many people in this room. I'm not done also researching some other options. I would like to see, obviously, the only way that we could do this with the council is we're going to have to do a one-up walk, or, you know, privately, but I think we can, I believe the city council can come back to the mayor, with the list of proposals on how we could deal with this matter without taking proposed actions that are proposed in this change of ordinance. That's, that's privately, but I don't have it. I'd like to say I can get it done in two weeks, but I don't think we can. I think it'll be closer at the end of March.
So, so by doing that, we, they remain at two o'clock?
Yeah. Everything stays, nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
You know, and there's a problem that exists. I mean, for anybody that's here, there's, there's problems that exist, but I don't know that we have explored every possibility or maybe changes. I've had several conversations with the mayor, I've had conversation with every member of the city council, and I believe that we all feel the same, is that, you know, we can put our heads together and do some research and come back and work out a resolution, work out some kind of resolution to this, to these problems.
I don't think there's problems exist, I think there's one problem that exists, and
I'm sorry.
I believe there's only one problem that exists, but I mean...
I'm not going to identify one problem or several others. I'm just going to say that we need to look at this very hard before we propose any kind of drastic action. That's, that's all I'm saying, all I'm saying. We will have a conversation. You know, I, in that effect, I had a conversation with you.
Yeah, and I mean, I feel strongly how I feel, so I mean...
Well, I'm not trying to...
I'm not, I'm just saying, you made your comment, I made mine, so I mean, just saying.
I'm not trying to judge anybody's mind, it's just that I personally, for me...
Need more time.
I need more time.
Okay.
That's the long and the short of it.
So it might be a possibility, it might go to midnight?
I'm sorry, sir.
So it's a possibility it might be midnight?
He says that possibility might be midnight.
Could it change? That's on the table?
That's not my way of thinking, but...
Okay.
Like I said, I, my stance hasn't changed as this one, if you want to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Any other question? Some tables, I just have a comment, is that, that's what tabling to me is about, everybody being, even the public, as I stated when we opened, having a finish, like you said, you feel stronger about you feel, you feel, Alderman feels the way he does. I'm, I'm all over. I'm, I'm wherever we got to go, but I also think that I'm strong about the way I feel about being all over. So we can go anywhere with it, and I think that that, the point being maybe, is that my point, my point is, I'm not, I'm not too in extreme, the word was used prohibition, the same prohibition.
Correct.
Nobody's going to be doing that, but, you know, that's not the case.
Well, I think twelve o'clock will be, sir.
Well, that's, that's, you know, what you do.
This is my opinion, that's all, you know.
Yeah, right. I mean, and it's an extreme opinion, and, you know, that's fine. I mean, and may, maybe, you know, maybe ten o'clock is prohibition, but we didn't say ten o'clock. We said that the ordinance said twelve, and there's other things that, so the prohibition is no alcohol allowed. So that's, you know, so that's what it means. But I just think that there's a room for expression for everybody. So and then I think that we all represent everybody. So if you feel that that's, there's only one way to do it, it's where it's at, you know, that's where you're at. I don't feel there's one way to do this. There's a lot of ways. So that's, that's, and that's my opinion, right?
Yes, exactly, I agree, you know, and I mean...
That's not prohibition.
Well, I mean, I think that some, some thought should have been put in this before we get to this point. I mean, I believe that the board, that the, that the chambers, like you say, should come in place, and also the alcohol, the clubs should come in place, so you get to sit and talk. I know you like to demonstrate, express how you feel about certain things, and you all come together, and you know, especially, you know, many times I've seen you do that with Public Works, many times I've seen you do that with the fire department, you brought them to a room, and you discuss with them, hey, listen, this is my feelings to the, to the clubs, and I think that should have been taken care of first before this drastic move. I mean, okay.
No.
All right.
As the mayor, I don't see that.
Okay.
I don't think that that's necessary. I think that I don't do the same to the bars, and I don't do the same to the, to the fast food chain. I answer to the rest of them.
And many times...
So I, I talk with the bars, I talk to all of them, and if I didn't support them, they would know that. I call them and tell them I don't support them. I've supported all of them being open. I helped some of them get open. So that's not the issue. When, when, when other people in the community reach out a call and they say other things contrary to what just the bars want, that has to be listened to also. There are residents that don't want certain things, whether it involves them or not. They just want it different, and it just so happens that it falls on them too, that that's how they want it. I've heard that, maybe you never heard that.
Well, I mean...
Maybe none of your constituents have said that they'd like to see it different.
Yes.
Maybe, well, maybe it did happen, but I've heard all sides of it.
All right.
So...
You know, I mean, I understand, I understand everybody's opinion, but I'm still comfortable at two o'clock, you know, I mean...
I'm comfortable with listening to anything.
All right, so...
So let's move on. Roll call.
Alderman Dowell.
Alderman Jones. Alderman Hampton Hauser, yes. Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under eight C, we have a closed ordinance, amended ordinance number twenty-one dash oh dash twenty-three oh five, authorizing the hiring of lateral transfer police patrol officers into Markham Police Department.
The last time we did the ordinance of twenty-one dash zero dash two, two three oh five, we had a sunset clause in there, and things haven't worked out the way we wanted. We still need policemen. It's not just the city of Markham, it's all, it's all more. It's become a must of a desirable job. And so this is, all this ordinance is doing is we're removing the sunset clause, and we're, we've changed a couple of small provisions, but basically, this is the same one instead proposed before. So I'm going to use the ordinance number of twenty-two dash zero dash two three two five, and I make a motion that we wait for forty-eight hours, we need some ordinance, the ordinance amended, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero dash two three oh five, authorizing the hiring of lateral transfers, police patrol officers into Markham Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Baron, second by Alderman Jones, for approval of ordinance amended ordinance, twenty-one zero dash two three zero five, as read. Question?
This is just, wait.
Did you say wait? I'm sorry. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Hampton Hauser, yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell.
Yes.
Alderman Dowell, yes. Motion carried.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash two three two five, and ordinance amended, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero dash two three oh five, authorizing the hiring of lateral transfer police patrol officers into the Markham Police Department.
Yes, we have one modification, second amendment modification, section ten, it has a date of hire of, it's May first, twenty twenty, you make that twenty twenty-one, in section ten, it's like it's two years behind, on page three, section ten.
The reason that date has the names, because that's the original ordinance that was passed in the first quarter of the year, so this is the third amendment, actually, the original was passed in two quarters, but that was the date that originally started this process.
Okay. Okay. Second.
Okay, motion, motion by Alderman Baron, second by Alderman Jones, for approval of ordinance amended, ordinance number forty-one... Motion by Alderman Baron, second by Alvin Jones for approval of ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one zero two, three, oh five, as read. Question? Roll call.
Alda Lady Hapton Hauser, yes. Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Baron?
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mayor, I hope that it matters under AC, AD, AF, or AG, however, under AH, the litigation matter uh, to respect to a case concerning the final settlement release, uh, settlement agreement, which is noted as case number twenty, L, five, four, nine, four. So we reserve that for executive session.
Yes.
Uh, if I ask, can I ask for a reservation approximately ten minutes in executive session? Fifteen minutes. Just say that. In respect to AH, I, uh, reservation fifteen minutes, executive session, and then first discuss the case.
Mm-hmm.
We should do that. I have to put a session against that. Other than that, that's all that I have.
Okay, city clerks report?
I have nothing this evening, ma'am.
Okay, just, um, under the mayor's report, a couple items. Um, just operationally, I might have to say that we're on task. I think that we got through the snow pretty reasonable. Uh, I think that we're going to have another bit of a challenge again here with weather again this evening and tomorrow. Patience is always asked. I know the public works, uh, gets to everyone. I know that we really had good staff um, to, to, to really step up. I think I indicated that to you all how they came in. Uh, some people took the forty-five minutes to get to work and they still got, and they didn't live far. It was the next time I went to that long get here. So, uh, I really have to commend the employees for stepping up and, uh, I was definitely going to try and get to you all about really trying to address, uh, commitment about what they've been doing. Definitely public works. We had the fire guys, couple of, uh, active fire chiefs and assistant.
Mm-hmm.
Assistant plowing, uh, they, you know, they get their salary, employees that did that, they asked to do it. But they stayed out there just with the public works guys, equally with smaller plows to lend the hand.
Mm-hmm.
So you can't really ask for more and of course, other fire guys take care of them, do their own business.
Mm-hmm.
So it's good that we have that where they're working together. And it's good that we got people that get up and come and work. And, uh, you, you just can't ask for more of that. So operationally, I think it's pretty status quo. For the sake of time, I just was wanting to just mention that much. Um, I am extremely still excited. I did get a chance to wear all of my African-American garb, like I wanted to this month. Uh, I'm pretty disappointed about that. I have, uh, actually, it was an African-American, my African wedding, I should say, years ago, and I still have all my garb I wanted to wear um, many years ago, it came from Africa. I thought that it looked nice to do that. Maybe I'll have to do it in March or April to somebody and why I'm aware. They might ask me anyway why I'm wearing it, to look at, I don't know why. But either way, I'm glad to see all the things that we have displayed at our city to African-Americans that have done so much. Um, I'm, I'm definitely proud of myself to be part of some of that. I, I've worked with many of the people here at the Markhamite through the years uh, with our first black mayor of the city, uh, which is Terry Miller's dad. Worked with him for a number of years and, um, I think that, uh, I've got an opportunity to sit here probably by him being who he was. And, uh, I think that that really helped a lot of us. I think, uh, I've run out here to say, Alvin Jones and Alvin Lady Hampton, we're sitting, uh, here. I'm down at McDowell. Uh, we're sitting here on some other people's.
Stalkers.
You know, we, we made it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, even local, Harold Murphy was canon. Um, I worked with Pat Crawford. He was the first black chief and myself, I was the first black fire chief. Nobody knew it again. You have to talk to me long enough to find out. It's my standing joke that, uh, you gotta ask for that, but I have fun with it. Um, so that's a real blessing that we have some history here locally. We got more than that. And I would like that as something that we want to really do is embrace more of our history in the community. We got a lot of people who have done a lot of things and I'm working on, I talked to the finance department. It's going to talk with the council about trying to do something budget-wise to, for us to really work on archives of history in our community.
Mm-hmm.
So not just what, uh, has happened, uh, you know, abroad, but what has happened here locally and how we're able to archive it in the community to be proud of. Um, I have to say that I'm equally reasonably versed in white history or anybody else's history because I've been here that long. I've been here like all of the Barrett. For some, I think Alderman Barrett's the only one that's got to beat the title. So, uh, my seventy, correct, for you seventy-two, seventy? For me, I come in seventy-six.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Um, Alderman Baron actually gave me my first job working with the C program until they fired me from Jason Girls at the College. Retired. But I was young and I didn't find out this stuff. I had to come to work and I picked the truck over Jason Kirk.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, and I never told my wife. But anyway, we were just. So anyway, I just wanted to say all those things, but history is important. And that's what makes us all of us who we are. And it's good that we have a month to reflect that. And like, we started, uh, the Hispanic Heritage, uh, later in the year. I know that we'll be doing some things that will be in June, 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 because that's a national holiday that states recognizes. So we'll be doing some things that way as well. So we have a lot of, of things to be proud of in our community and our city. Um, and, uh, we're going to have some differences, but that's what makes us who we are in this event. We're supposed to have some, we shouldn't fall out of it. But we should get right back at it and try and make each other stronger and better. So with that, uh, that's the end of my report. Uh, Mr. Champion is not here this evening. He's at, at a Bulls game.
Yes.
Now, he's at his party, you know. He went down there, you gotta network it by, to try to get more African-American firemen at least. So he's part of a group that's networking down there that's called the Black Fire. Looking like they're on Channel Nine, it's fun. And they're trying to induce more African-Americans to the fold with. That's the reason we, we want in our communities, a little bit more of what looks like us and that is what it's all about. And, and anyway, so with that, uh, go over to all of that, every back reports. Good evening, Alvin Jones.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'd like to say, uh, thank you all for coming out. I really appreciate you all taking this time out to, um, come. Um, it's a small victory, so hopefully we can continue, uh, the discussion. I, I believe that, um, businesses are important for the city of Markham. And you all have lived and scrimmaged to get your business up and running. And I, I, I feel for you. I believe that's a balance. Obviously, City of Markham is doing a great job. I think the mayor is doing a great job by bringing in Amazon, by bringing in different companies and businesses. And I believe that the club scene is also a vital element to that imbalance. You know, um, I used to be young once upon a time, and I mean, I understand being twenty-five and younger, but you know, I'm a little older now. And sometimes I like to go out and relax among some ducks. Just some nice jazz and music and talk with friends, like Cheers commercials. So, you know, I mean, let's work together. I believe that we have, um, um, the mayor is open to everyone's understanding and opinion. Once again, I thank you all for coming out for doing that. Um, also, I'd like to say also what a great job the mayor is doing. We actually have grant money coming in for cameras, running down under Fifth Ninth Street, lights and cameras, security, because we value your safety. The police department is doing a great job, and that's what we're trying to do to make sure you are safe and comfortable. That's what it's about, not being a daycare or babysitter for a club, you know. So we doing things, the biggest putting things in place, but it was again, it requires a balance, you know. Um, last but not least, I like to say Black History Month is a beautiful thing. And man, I love what you're doing here, far as, um, the banners and signs. But I was thinking that I see the Tini Park has something for the veterans where they had these actually put on the poles outside. And that, um, the, um, like, uh, the Crawford family would pay for a banner that they can put up for Black History Month. Maybe we could use something like that to get it outside. I know for Hispanic Month, we do things, and for the Saint Patrick's Day, maybe we could do these banners to bring them out. Someday we could do that, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I did some more information about, you know, what Tini Park does. Maybe we can do the same. Maybe we can do the same thing for Hispanic Day and for Saint Patrick's Day. Just pitch it as a people in Markham. So these banners be for people in Markham and what they have done, so we won't forget the legacy.
I'm totally.
Thank you, mayor.
Good, good thing. I'm glad that you said I'm doing a good job, but if not, I was going to say you apologize.
Oh, man. Give me more.
I was like, why did you choose me and say I'm working?
Hey, you know, I wouldn't put you in office, I didn't. That's right. Don't tell me we agree to disagree, but we okay. We still friends. We get a beer one time at the club. I said, why?
Okay, there we go.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Alvin Baron.
Good evening. Um, I have to use, I mean, it's public works that all those sleep parks have done an excellent job. All of that. Be a superior soul. Uh, given everything that's going on, I think I'll just pass tonight. It's my report.
Good evening, Alvin Lady Hampton.
Well, good evening, ma'am. Good evening, council. And good evening, members that attended our meeting tonight. Uh, I'm just going to be short and brief, uh, just to, uh, elaborate just a little bit in reference to the concerns that we have right now with our, with our bars. I appreciate you all so much for being patient with us, because again, we want to make sure that we make the right decision to move forward and not jeopardize anyone else's business. You know, uh, they say, ma'am, you know, one bad act spoils a whole bunch, but we trying to make a change to that. And, uh, and, and thank you for allowing us to table this here so we can make sure we can make the right decisions to move forward for the betterment of the city and for the betterment of your businesses as well. So I appreciate all the phone calls that I receive, and I've had some lengthy, lengthy phone calls. And trust me, you, I do listen. I do hear you and I do understand exactly what your position is. I've been, uh, entrepreneurship for many years. Unfortunately, not in that, in that category or whatever, but I do understand that that's a livelihood. So again, we are trying to make sure that we make the correct decisions to make sure that you can survive, the city can, can, can survive, and then also the residents to be content as well. So I appreciate you all for coming out for that. Uh, second, um, I know I've had quite a few water breaks, you know, in my world, ma'am, especially on one of our major streets on, on Laughlin. And I just want to say to the residents, if they're listening, uh, that, uh, uh, we, we definitely been on top of that. I've been out there and I've been speaking directly with them and let them know that, you know, it's a waterman break and we're going to make sure that we can rectify. But then again, I also share a little history with them as well, you know, uh, um, we're in the process of getting grant monies or whatever to repair these streets and our pipelines and our water lines because they're old. They're old. And many times, the reason why we have a lot of these main breaks, not only because it's cold, because we have trees in our community that should be in wooded areas. And these roots or whatever really kind of break it up, but just trying to move forward, we trying to make sure that we can rectify those as well, okay? Also, I want to say kudos again, ma'am, to, uh, uh, and the council to, to Public Works and to, to the fire department as well, because they definitely were out there, uh, uh, when we hit that last snowfall. They were definitely there and they were definitely doing their jobs. And then also the other contractors that were out there as well, making sure that the senior citizens' homes get, uh, uh, driveways get passed. So my, my, my kudos go out to all the individuals that actually dealt with that. I think you did an awesome job. Even though I've received phone calls, um, when we first got the, uh, uh, the snow, uh, the snow hadn't even been down our alley, and they was calling, where is the plows? But, you know, they, the, the, the Public Works and individuals that, that are actually performing their duties, they know their job. And I explained that to the residents that had called. I said, Public Works understand their job. When do you come out and do you have a plow right in front of your house every five minutes? It don't work like that. You know, so I just want to be patient, you know, and be a little bit more understanding. Last but not least, I want to say Black History Month. I think we really do take the opportunity to display that, uh, Black History Month. Thank you, Alderman, um, McDowell, for, uh, kind of hitting that up or whatever. I think it's a beautiful job. Uh, we actually asked that individual to just come through and just look at all the different, uh, individuals on the podium or whatever and, and, and learn a little bit more about our history. I do agree with Alderman Jones in reference to us putting flags up because I know Hazercrest has theirs up. Hazercrest has flags out. So if we can actually, uh, be diverse and do that for other, uh, cultures or other, uh, uh, histories, things that's going on in our community, that would be an awesome thing. I mean, yeah, ma'am, that's the end of my report.
I told the Hazercrest mayor I'm mad at.
Why?
Because he got the flag that we can get.
Yes, yes, but that's all right. Listen, we got your team, we'll get them next year. We'll get them up.
Okay, good evening, Alvin Lady McDowell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Good evening, audience. Uh, I invite everyone who are here tonight. I know you're here for a different reason, but I encourage you all to take a little time to enjoy the Black History and learn about, um, our American, um, Black History. And this, ma'am, that is the end of my report.
What about the Valentine you gave out, the seniors?
Oh, I hope all the residents enjoyed their Valentine gift that came from, uh, Mayor Roger Pyle and our city council. It was indeed a pleasure to be able to serve each and every one of you all uh, during this Valentine season, and I hope that we were able to spread some love to everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you as well. I, I want to say to the public, a great deal of the things that you see around the building already down, this is the second solid year with me that COVID has even appeared. Really, really got out here and went to work and some of the other staff contributed a little bit, but
Mm-hmm.
she really takes this on as a, as something of heart and, uh, we're going to make it grow and be bigger and better. So I think that would be very nice. Okay, with that, I ask if you want to speak tonight, please sign up because we're going to do that now. Uh, I need a motion to open the floor to the public.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
I have it. Sign up and we'll reach off and we'll let it through. We have to keep it ringing.
Three minutes tops.
Yeah. Otherwise, it would be a graduation.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy Valente.
You can say where you're at, I guess. Is that okay, uh? The IT?
Thank you, ma'am. My team, but that's fine. If, if you come over, it's a little easier. Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right.
Cindy Valente, thank you, council, for having me here today. Um, I'm with Envy's Pub, my husband Neil has owned Envy's Pub from, uh, since two thousand and seven. And yes, we've had issues with the virus before and, uh, you know, we've been here for quite a while. So we've been through a lot of different changes and a lot of different times and, and, and it's just been affecting our business. Um, I think that we run a good business in, in our community, in your community. We do not live here, but we're not far, but the people that come to our business have been local people. They, uh, are from the community, even though they've moved away, they still come back to us. We have, uh, you know, video gaming, we have pool tables, we have darts, and half the time we have a, a puzzle on our pool table so that people could come and, you know, do that. But we've had struggles with COVID and then with the timing of being shut down. And we just want to stay here, you know, for a couple more years, hopefully, you know, and, um, be a part of your community. And, and I think we've not had issues. And I would just like to say. And I would just like to say, if you could just consider us as business owners, and try, trying to make a business for ourselves. We'd really appreciate that. And I thank you for listening to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you both.
Mr. Valente, did you want to speak also?
Hi, my name is Neil Valenti. Like she, my wife said, we've been here 15 years. Quiet bar where people come to engage in conversation while the jukebox is playing in the background. You know, so we have live music at the weekends. Blues, Motown, stuff like that, classic rock. We don't charge a COVID charge. We're trying to do this for the community. Most of our customers, I think my wife said, live within two, three miles or in my, so. But property taxes don't go down. Our fees seem like they're constantly coming up. If our hours get cut to midnight, that's 720 hours a year that we will not be making any money to help us pay for $20 plus property taxes. And I'm pretty sure we'll be out of business if the hours are cut to midnight. So I understand the problems that you may have. I just hope everything works out for everyone. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anderson Sutton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I thank you guys for allowing us an opportunity to speak and also tabling this decision for 30 days. I wish, the only asset I have is that this has brought some of the bar owners closer together. And in that regard, it would be good if we were involved in that process, if our opinions were heard, and we helped with some of the ideas that we might be able to do to help everybody. None of us want any bad things happening in our establishment. None of us. And so if we can be a part of that process, it would be greatly appreciated. And we think we could help you guys and help the council in a partnership, get to a point where it's a minimum for everybody. I have a lot more to say, but.
Pamela, I can't. Matt, 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 okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am here like everyone else because of what we thought was gonna happen tonight. And we are so grateful that this is a table, giving us an opportunity to, as Mrs. Sutton said, we want to be a part of this. We want to be a part of you all coming up with a solution. Because we don't live in the community doesn't mean we aren't about community. We are here in this community because we want to be here. We want to stay here and want to thrive here. I agree with the Valentines about the taxes. So we have to make sure that we all do our part to help offset the bad apples. The bad apples are not supposed to be with the good apples. The wheat is not supposed to be with the tares. It doesn't work that way. So we are actually talking, since this happened, I talked with Mr. Valente for the first time today. I spoke with all the aldermen. I spoke with Mr. Sutton, and I met with another bar owner who escapes me right now because I'm very nervous. That being said, we feel as if, and we even talked about a task force, doing something where we combine the municipality with the business owners, because it's not just about bad bars or restaurants that have a class A. It could be any bad business in Markham that we want to get rid of. So there has to be a process that we help to put in place, because I don't want to be in the bad club. We need to separate ourselves from these people, and we have to do what we have to do. And we shouldn't be the ones that are collateral damage because of something that one or two people or businesses are doing. And that's all I'm gonna say, because I could go on all night about this. I'm very passionate. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Matt. Cornell Darn Jr.?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Alderman. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Darnell Darn Jr. I'm the president and CEO of Southland Black Chamber of Commerce. I was left the largest black business association in the state of Illinois. And I definitely want to commend you guys for having handled the situation tonight. I think it was a great idea to table with, and we would like to be a part of the conversation. We've actually got about three or four new members since we heard about what was going on. Like Mr. Sutton mentioned, it brought a lot of bar owners together. I met bar owners, a bar and a restaurant that I didn't even know existed. I think that, Mr. Mayor, the video that I saw on the news about what happened at the one bar was horrible. All right, horrible and scary too. And I think that it's definitely a conversation that, as a community, we should have, even on a regional level. I know you're the head of the regional Black Mayor's caucus. And I think coming up with some type of solution on a regional level would be a good idea. And I think it'll be something that can heal some of the wounds in the community that happens at some of the bar. And also put something in place as a suggestion to all of our Southland communities to make our bar a part of our community, so.
Thank you. Wallace State of Bradley.
Hey, how you doing, sir?
Good, all good.
They say a lot of people are deep in Chicago, and they come in to the Southland.
We don't want them all, man.
But they're rest in bold.
But we take some.
I'm glad that this body decided to table it, to allow the business owners to be able to have input. Because it takes everyone to come to a compromise to make things better, we say. And I think what it's gonna say, no, I don't think I know, it's gonna set a precedence, were all business people, regardless if they're bars, business lines, or whatever it is, that have to come together to help the individuals that feel like they can, they can come into a community and shoot up a community and not caring about the business, not caring about the people, because your concern is public safety, for the constituents as well as the business. You know, normally, I'll be speaking as an adversary and stuff. I'll just feel good. You know, you know, man, you know, we know one thing I did, you know. You was gonna find something that was gonna be right, because that the people know that you was willing to visit, to what they concerned. I was raised where one after another, so we can learn. And with that, I want to say I appreciate this body of help.
Well, see, we just started, we did all our, and we got.
What do you have here?
That's what a good government does.
Right.
I, I didn't want to put anybody out there, but I would.
I know you would, and they did too. I didn't want to say that I'd be the one.
We're gonna do good, so I think that's, thank you so much.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll pay. And I think it rests the panel. Your community commission, so. I am calling it's Neil. Second.
Second.
All right. We need to reset, Dr. Defense Department.
Second.
Okay. I have it, okay. Yes. I'm gonna make a motion that. Second. Motion by Alderman Barrett, Secretary of Water and Jones, to allow authority for the legal team to settle the case as red. Question? Roll call.
Alderman McCow. Alderman McCow. Alderman Jones?
She's chosen.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman McCow, we're gonna roll call.
Yes, Alderman McDowell.
Alderman Barrett?
Yes.
Alderman Hampton House?
Yes.
Motion to your.
All right, and for item 13, do we have a motion?
May I make a motion that we adjourn?
Alderman Hampton?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Barrett?
That was funny, and that was.